Everybody has building inspectors and they all pay almost the same thing. So we want to try and gain some ground. Now that might not necessarily lead for us all the way to the top. But methodology wise, we're now going to consistently apply the market data we collected to develop updated salary range for each job at market plus 3%. So we've designed a salary table. That building inspector prevailing rate gives us some insight. But then we're also leaning on a recommendation of going to 103% of market. So we're going to apply that information consistently. So this benchmark job informs some other jobs. We have maybe a senior inspector, we have a chief inspector. We have maybe a senior inspector, we have a chief inspector, and so we work our way through -- I'll back up just one -- we work our way through a career ladder and a job series that way to say, "Okay, we're going to have some intentional distances between sequential and promotional career ladder opportunities."
And that was something that we weren't doing before, was these job linkages. And so, you would have these benchmarks, but when you would move the entire pay range, but you weren't linking to positions. So, then you would have some that were pockets in there that were not being kept up with, right? Like, maybe we found out that the accountants were 9% below, but we averaged everything out, and we turned out that our whole pay plan was 4% below. But we were moving at 4%, but those 9 percenters stayed still below. And so, that's where you're seeing a lot of these discrepancies that are coming up. That and the market was moving so fast this last year, we're behind.
It really did. Speaking of market moving fast, track meet, all right? Eventually, police officers are going to start at 100K, not quite yet, but this is the top of the range. Historically, the city of Louisville has aimed to compare to the top of the range and be at 103% of market. So, what that red line represents is where we are currently, which is about a percent and a half behind. By your definition, about 4.5% behind, right? And so, we're trying to gain that ground and attempt to be a little bit better than average.
Quick question.
Yeah?
Do these represent, at least stat across all variables, years of experience and other things as well, so, like, by way of example, Grand Prairie, 103,000, is that a pull-up officer that have 20 years of tenure? And for Arlington, there's only three years of tenure on average?
It's really shrunk. So, I believe that this is apples to apples as you can get it. However, the gamesmanship being played in the market currently is how long to reach that number.
Okay.
Right? Super astute question because, you know, the distance between steps, the number of steps, and I don't want to say they only care about how quick to get to top, but sometimes that comes up. I would say on average, we're seeing about seven years now to top of scale.
These are all represented by 70 police officers, this is what they're --
They're represented at the top of the range. Some are five, some are more like eight or nine.
Okay, thank you.
No, I said a very critical question when we talk about the now what, in terms of whether or not we really want to, you know, mess with the scale design or not. Firefighter at the top of the range was a little bit closer to market, off by just under 1%, but then you can see what it takes to kind of leapfrog. It's only about $1,500, I would say, only, but that's a pretty tight array from where you are to gaining some ground on some of your competitors. Back to my building inspector example, just real quick, I won't spend too much time, but the discussion around where classification and compensation come together. Here, we're showing you building inspector, senior inspector, and then a chief inspector. The scales that are proposed have 5% between each pay range, so this career ladder grows at 10% between each job. Certifications can come into play, job complexity can come into play. Where I move to maybe being able to train new hires, perhaps oversee the work of a small work group, now we're working our way up through senior and through chief, right? This creates a foot in the door, but it also creates some retention opportunities and areas for growth that are still within bounds of market and driven by their job duties. Living wage, I think, had come up during your retreat, if I'm not mistaken, in February. The latest report puts living wage at about 18 and a quarter. Before the study, we had just over 70 employees that were below that number full-time. Almost all of those, I would almost say by happy accident, but not really, almost all of those are addressed in the study. That leaves about 10 people behind, so we would bring those folks at least to that pay rate as well. We have proposed a 103% market philosophy, so all jobs have been modeled out on the pay ranges. That represents just a little bit of that market plus, and that was also where we had kind of left off in November. What's key is this last bullet. We are going to be moving employees, as I mentioned, into the salary range, so if you're below minimum, I need to get you onto the plan. But if you're a five-year employee or a seven-year employee, I really don't want to leave you at the minimum. I don't want to pay you the same as maybe a new hire that we haven't met yet, and I don't want to pay by accident a one-year, and a four-year, and a seven-year person all the same rate. So, we laid a little bit of a mathematical trap over those pay ranges, and we're moving employees into that. We're paying special attention to those employees in the first couple of pay ranges. Your directors and certainly the market also expresses a desire to ensure that frontline workers, right, are paid a competitive wage. So, we kind of bundle this all in one topic here of the living wage discussion, a competitive salary plan, but also not just leaving people at the minimum of the pay scale. For implementation, as I mentioned, in steps in sequence, those below minimum would go to the minimum. There's about $600,000 there of cost for the civilians. You have trades positions and IT positions, as well as police and fire positions that are on a step plan. So, if we make adjustments to those plans, under the initial implementation umbrella, if your scale moves, you move with it. So, if you're on step three and we need to move the whole range by 2% or 3%, I stay on step three, I may or may not be step eligible on top of that. Those are things that typically are already budgeted for. And then the in-range targeting is, as I mentioned, spreading people out in those pay ranges to ensure actual salaries are a little bit more competitive. On the civilian and skill base, before I get to police and fire, the estimated full year cost, fully loaded, is about 3.5 million, right? When we add police and fire to that, we pick up another 1.7. So, our annualized 12-month cost of salary plus benefits, we're estimating at 5.3. If we implement in April, as we're proposing, I'll let staff speak to the fiscal impact of that piece of it. But ultimately, we are now positioning scales at 103% of market, we're positioning actual salaries at 103% of market, and we're carrying people into those pay ranges a little bit. We are not maxing anybody out, we're not taking anybody over the top of the pay range, but we've modeled out the ranges and then we fill in with the people. We owe you job description updates. We'll also be working with departments to identify the job family progression, so those worker to senior, or the inspector to senior, to identify individuals that are already working in that capacity and at that level. And then we continue to study ad pay and certification pay. That was also on our list. I believe we're potentially at a spot to give finance the mouse before I do that. Any questions for Moon?
I have a question. So, ever since millennials aren't here in the market, but I've heard over and over again is days off is much more important than salary. I hear that over and over again. Thank you, it even came up at retreat. And I noticed that that's not considered here at all. Did that come up at all in surveys, days off being more important than salary?
Uh, no. Yeah, not as a direct expression to your workforce. What's interesting and maybe similar to your audit, some of those things are like, I don't want to say the price of doing business in the public sector, but fairly anticlimactic. We tend to study, you know, things like who pays what for health insurance. That can be a big one, like to get dependence on there. Paid time off, especially at certain trigger points, you know, five-year, 10-year, like, if I stay, will I grow in vacation, those kinds of things. We did not pose that direct question to the workforce, but I think in working with HR and knowing that they have their pulse on and do employee input surveys fairly frequently, that's a really good point, I think, to kind of couple up the broader, what else do we offer, you know, kind of thing. Because TMRS kind of washes out in the market, it seems, where that one doesn't move the needle like, "Oh, we're gaining ground because we do this, so we sacrifice that," or that kind of thing, but I think it's really hard in this market to, and you're -- I'm smiling about the millennials comment, but I think getting employees maybe under the age of 30 or 35 to appreciate the benefits is every public organization's challenge. It's forcing them to make good decisions with the benefits that you offer, instead of being like, "I'm going to leap for $2" to the private and then go, "Oh, but what did I just miss out on?"
So, what I think I'm hearing you say is that we're associating salary as a gating factor. Once you get past salary, then the expanse your stuff is what makes somebody decide to come here.
Can I ask something? Because, so, we hired them to do just the compensation stuff. But we had a survey that went out to our staff, and I think we presented to you guys at retreat that talked about all of that. And the feedback we got back was, "We want you to look at benefits, we want you to look at compensation," and so there are multiple phases to this, and right now, Ted is working on the benefit side. So, it comes, it will come to you guys to talk about that. He just wasn't tasked with it with his contract.
We get all kinds of trends, though. It definitely comes up. Mr. Mayor, other questions?
Other questions, Council?
I appreciate the summary, thank you.
Yes, I do.
So, next up, we've got --
We have just a few more slides from finance. Do you want me to drive?
So, these are the cost estimates, again, broken down on that, just kind of explained it a little bit on civilian, police and fire, skilled trades, IT, dispatch, detention, and then that part-time includes that equal work for equal pay, as well as just adjusting some of those salaries that they needed to be. So, the total cost to implement the study is $5.2 million, and you might remember when we did the budget this year, we'd set aside $3 million, knowing that we would need to have it set aside this year going into next budget year. And so, the impact for next year is going to be that $5.2 million minus the three we have set aside. So, we'll be looking for $2.2 million in next year's budget. This year, when we go to implement this in April, which is what I think our next slide will show, implementation, we'll need about $2.6 million to implement for the rest of the fiscal year. We have the $3 million already sitting there, so there won't be any impacts this year that we'll need. We just need to be realized that this is going to have an impact to next year's budget. So, the amount, though, if you remember whenever we were doing budget this year, we actually had several items that we budgeted out of ongoing operating money that was actually one-time in nature. So, the biggest one was the 121 Business Corridor Study. That was $600,000, and we funded that out of ongoing revenue, knowing that we might want to hedge our bets a little bit and have some one-time in our ongoing budget. So, we actually had about $2.2 million, $2.1 million in the general fund, that was one-time in nature. So, basically, we can intersperse this ongoing cost for that one-time when we take it out. So, it's going to be easier to fund the full plan in the next budget year. But in addition, next year, in order to keep going and making sure that we remain competitive, we need to budget something for next year's comp study. It's not just this year and we're done and we go on, we've got to make sure every year we're within that top tier and trying to keep leading. So, we'll have to find another probably $2 million, three, I don't know yet what that is going to look like. But just so you know, we'll be funding that $2.2 million plus, some type of at least market adjustment or merit for next fiscal year. So, I think next year, you're going to see quite a bit of a hit in your budget again for the second year in a row related to this, and then we'll go back to more of a constant, trying to just keep up with our normal average.
So, just, I'll just say, to wrap this up, so for next steps, we're really going to be doing a very aggressive communication process, so you can see that right there. I will say, I've been very pleased with the communication draft documents that I've seen. And do you want to talk about your next year implementation and everything?
Yeah, so, we'll be working with HR to formulate some letters that identify, you know, any change, right? Did your job title change? Did your salary range change? Did your salary change? We'll be spending some time tomorrow morning and tomorrow afternoon with employees, both live and, I think, virtual options for employees to hear about it. They're not going to hear about their individual stuff, you know, for a little bit yet, but then the employees would see that at the end of April on those paychecks. And then our next steps include those job description updates, continuing to study the survey and the ad.
Quite frankly, I'm surprised that it wasn't higher than this, with the way the market's really going crazy. But I appreciate y'all and everything you're doing. This has been a long couple of years, and this is a good faith effort on our behalf to show the value that we hold in our employees, because quite frankly, they're the best asset that this city has, and without them, it's awful.
Other comments before we move into looking at the agenda?
Even the millennials. I didn't mean to --
Oh! Had to go.
Claire, I think one thing that has to be clear, and that I think is an important metric to continue to keep top of mind, is that we expect a tremendous amount of value from our employees, at which point they should expect to be compensated well. We have a tremendously small headcount per capita, and so, to balance that, to make sure that, you know, Council, I think, is seeing in the big picture where we are, that headcount needs to continue to be competitive and lean, because we're compensating for that kind of activity on the other side. So, I hope we can find that balance, but that, to me, is going to be an important metric moving forward, as it always has been. So, I appreciate, I appreciate everything our staff does, they're amazing folks, and we should be leaving market because they put out that kind of effort.
And I think when people were just looking at the dollars and saying, "Oh, we're just putting money into employees," you need to understand the cost of --
Turnover.
Yeah, turnover and trying to replace --
They're being short-sighted.
Because generally, what happens is, your best employees are being plucked away. So, and that's what we don't want, one thing that's been key, you know, the funny thing, opening the new center with the pickleball thing, you know, when you look at the story of how it was renamed and employees that we had, we had employees that had 30-plus years. We may not have that type of longevity anymore, but we don't want to be the place that has people with one-year's experience or over seven-years' experience. I've been at those companies.
We don't want to be the employee universities for every other city.
That's true. So, I just want to say that for the folks who are missing, just at the dollars.
Great, great. All right, I think we're good there. We'll go ahead and move into review of the agenda. Council, if you wouldn't mind pulling your packets. Councilmember Green, we have you with the invocation. Councilmember Jones with the pledges. We have four proclamations. Item F, consent agenda. Item one, approval of the minutes. Item two, acceptance of the ACFR. Item three, approval of a bid award for the construction of Glory, Parque en la Gloria, our new glory park. I just keep wanting to say better, Parque. Item four, utility agreement with Texas Department of Transportation. This is I-35, Yang.
Oh, boy.
Again, item five, utility agreement with TexDOT. Item six, the approval of the opioid settlement. Item seven, resolution of adoption of the hazard mitigation plan. Item eight, DRMC.
Who's one you need to do that?
So, I wanted to add a little commentary to that. I think it's important, because we're having some discussions about cog money and other interactions between transit agencies, I think it's important for this year that we continue to have somebody with that DCTA experience on that board, so I'm --
Are you going to do it?
At the will of Council, I would be willing to do it. We're just trying to build some relationships and put some more revenue over here, as Kristen is aware. So, appreciate you guys, thank you for that. Item nine, consideration of the proposed budget calendar, budget workshops, make sure you double-check your calendars there for August 12th. Item 10, variance, waiving a portion of the fees associated with Keep Calm and Baseball Law. Ms. Anaya, this is just the continued step program that we've been doing, so --
A, YBAH has been renamed.
Thank you. Eleven, expanding the school zone on FM 544 near Windhaven. Councilmember Kelly, you have some expertise on that one, I think.
Yeah, it's a speedway. That's not helped that, I think.
I was surprised that the crosswalk is not at current speed. That's strange.
That was a miss. Reports, do we have any close session? Any additional close session?
Yes, sir.
With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the workshop, and we'll move into the regular session in about four minutes.
It is 7:01, Monday, April 3rd, and we are calling this session of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. We do have up first -- We do have up first is Councilmember Green with our invocation.
Please stand with me and join me for a moment of quiet contemplation. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge to the American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm on the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. It is spring, and along with roadside flowers, we get proclamations. So tonight, we have four of them. And the first one up, if I could have Ms. Melinda Goller join me up here. You brought the better two-thirds, too.
Oh.
So we are talking about Child Abuse Prevention Month here. And so, whereas there were 589 children affected by abuse and neglect served by CASA of Denton County in 2022, and whereas more than 240 volunteers from Denton County work with the organization annually by giving their time to ensure safety for our community's children, and whereas our youngest citizens need and deserve to be surrounded by love and positive relationships while being given guidance and protection, now therefore, in honor of all children in Denton County, we do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and commend the work of CASA of Denton County volunteers in advocating for children during this difficult time in their lives. In witness thereof, I have heard unto set my hand and cause the official seal to be affixed on this the third day of April 2023. Melinda, thank you guys so much. We really appreciate CASA and all that they do. Do you have a few words?
Sure. On behalf of CASA, I would like to thank you, Mayor Gilmore, and the Council for your continued support. And of that 539 kids that we served this year, 138 of those were Lewisville kids. And it cost us about $2,000 per kid to provide them an advocate. So your constant support is very valuable, and there are a lot of advocates that serve those kids that are from our own city of Lewisville, and we're always needing more advocates. So anybody that's interested, we have an information session coming up on April 18th, and we would love to have you. If you want more information, you can go to the CASA website or show up at one of the information sessions. Thank you.
All right. Ashley and Rachel, y'all mind joining me up here? We've got Community Development Week. Ladies, how are you? So part of the backbone of community, I mean, I talk about community all the time when I'm out, and part of the backbone of how the city can support that is this department right here and what we're talking about. So tonight, and you can whereas along with me. This is like a call-and-response kind of opportunity. So if you're here, bring it on. So whereas the week of April 10th through 14th, 2023, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program, say that five times fast. Whereas the CDBG program is celebrating 49 years of providing local governments with the resources required to meet the needs of persons of low and moderate income, and CDBG funds are used by thousands of neighborhood-based nonprofit organizations throughout the nation to address pressing neighborhood and human service needs. And whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate-income people. And whereas over the past five years, our community has received a total of $4,971,602, which was used to fund the following activities. The Salvation Army Community Center design, the Children's Advocacy Center outdoor courtyard, land purchase for Glory Park, public services funding to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19, public services funding to serve Lewisville residents by partnering with 15 local nonprofit agencies, and upcoming activities, including the Salvation Army rehabilitation, equipment purchases for Glory Park, Southwest Parkway complete street design, minor housing rehab projects, and our Fox Hembry Cemetery cleanups. Now therefore, I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through 14th, 2023, as Community Development Week, and urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the Community Development Block Grant Program on its 49th anniversary and the important role it plays in our community proclaimed today. Do y'all have anything you'd like to add?
Just quickly, wanted to thank Council and City Manager for continuing to support us and our programs. So we're very grateful for that.
I will tell you that Mayor Kerry once said that CDBG was the hardest-working board in the city, and having been a servant on that board, they go through a lot of material. So thank you guys so much for all that work. All right. Next up, we have Kelly Rouse and Mindy White. Thank you, guys. And we are now proclaiming Water Conservation Month as well. So whereas water is vital and precious resource for the city of Lewisville and is necessary to sustain the economy lifestyle desired by the residents of public health and general welfare, and whereas the city of Lewisville and the Office of Sustainability work to educate residents and raise awareness about the importance of water conservation through public outreach and the Residential Water Conservation Credit Program, and whereas the city-- Water Conservation Credit Program. You can get credit back on your water bill if you can serve. There's a flag here. Whereas the city of Lewisville supports and participates in the Wyland National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation during April, which would be nice, y'all don't want to do it for yourself, help me out a little bit here. We get some bonus points on that. And whereas every business, industry, school, and resident can make a difference when it comes to conserving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community, and whereas to effectively adhere to the city's 2025 Vision Plan and Sustainability Action Plan, every effective means to promote wise water use and prevent water waste should be employed to ensure a sustainable water supply for future generations. Now therefore, I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, along with the members of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Water Conservation Month. Anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Mayor, for your continued support. Just to give a little bit of information about the things that he highlighted, our Water Conservation Credit Program, you can find on our website, you can just type in Water Conservation Credit. If you do different improvements around your home, you can get that money right back on your utility bill. We'll pay you for making those improvements around your home. The challenge he mentioned is a national challenge where we compete against other cities our same size to have our residents pledge to conserve water during the month of April. Last year, we ended up being sixth in our population size in the country, so we're really hoping that we can do even better this year. You can go to mywaterpledge.com and just type in Lewisville, Texas, and it gives you a whole list of things you can do, little things like turning off the water when you're brushing your teeth, or taking a quick shower, only washing a full load of clothes, just little things like that that can really make a big difference. And water really is such a precious resource for us, and I know that we value it here. We get the lake level report every week. I know that that is just a highlight of our council meetings, and, you know, with our drought that we had last summer, it can really make a big impact on our community if we make these small choices at home. Did you want to add anything? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And our final proclamation this evening, I have Chief of Police Kevin Dever and our Director of Neighborhood Services, Mr. Chris McGinn. Y'all would join me up here. There also has the most words on it, I'm just going to let you know. But here we are for Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And so whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of the city of Lewisville, and the citizens of the city of Lewisville value their overall health and that of their family and fellow citizens and are proud to support of services such as Mental Health Month and Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And whereas half of Denton County parents are not familiar with mental health services in their community, and the need for comprehensive, coordinated mental health services for individuals and families places upon our community and is a critical responsibility. And whereas one in five adults has a diagnosable mental health condition, and there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their overall health and well-being. And whereas each citizen, local business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, and faith-based organization shares the burden of mental health concerns and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness, recovery, and support prevention efforts. And whereas the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team, Denton County MHMR Center, United Way of Denton County, and the Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County, led by Cook Children's, through their unique partnership and prevention-based approaches to serving children and adolescents, are effectively addressing the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. And whereas it is appropriate that a month should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward mental health education and the support of treatment and recovery, it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards our children's mental health and well-being. Therefore, be it resolved that I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month and May 10th, 2023, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And I call upon our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every person's mental health needs to unite this month in the observance of such exercises, as will commit the people of Denton to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Chief, Chris?
Whereas, we all three-- we all three serve on the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team, and on behalf of the United Way, we appreciate the city of Lewisville for helping us increase awareness of mental health conditions and resources as part of the Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you.
All right. Item E, Visitor Citizens Forum. We have no public hearings tonight. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping a feat, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have three speakers. City Secretary, is that all we have? Okay. First of our folks here tonight, it looks like I've got Nancy Sansom? And then I believe we have Garvin "Olivia" Gamble-Swan here in support of Ms. Sansom, but does not wish to speak. Is that--
Wait a second, they're talking back there.
But you don't, you're here to support but not to speak? Or are you here to speak? Okay, then, not a problem. I will make that correction here. You got it. We'll let Nancy go first. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I reside at 4015 South Garden Ridge Boulevard, and I've lived here for five years. On behalf of the Lewisville Senior Living Challenges Association, and also New Beginnings, who's also come here tonight to support us, and I just speak as a coordinator and spokesman. We've been in operation for over a year now, and we're just constantly finding new resources. And all of you have been tremendous in helping us. We are very grateful for the mayor, the city council, and the city manager's department for meeting with us to help make Lewisville a better place to live, especially for seniors who are just trying to keep a roof over their heads. You'll hear that often.
Absolutely.
Just to present a short update on housing for you this evening, if you haven't already gotten the drift, we are expanding out to several other senior citizens' community living centers to unite and build bridges of unity in developing strategies and to bring awareness to our civic leaders of the rent crisis that many of us are facing. Last week, though, the new Texas Rent Relief Program gave us great hope. You probably may have heard that after it opened up this last Monday morning, it crashed Monday night with 10,000 renters trying to get in on that, and many of us were not successful. And they also ran out of the, it was $53 million that they had. So that means that there's a great need out there everywhere for seniors who don't have, may not have a place to live. We are very grateful for United Way, Gary Henderson, and Salvation Army, and Christian Community Action, CCA. They have been able to save at least six of our residents from eviction process. We, however, have nine more in the pipeline that are desperate for help. Also, upon our requests, Lewisville City sent out specialists to measure and repair a tenant's living room window that has not been opened for years. She has put in repeated requests and has not been able to have it rectified, but someone from you all or the city repair department came out and took measurements. In addition, because we have real concerns about the back gate, we have two gates, there's three gates, two gates, and the gates, back gates were locked a couple weeks ago. So the fire department and the garbage trucks could not get in. Because of the size of our building with 218 residents, there was, you're supposed to have at least two exits. We only had one in one lane. So notoriously, the residents were concerned about that. So finally, after help from the city, the owners decided that they would open the gates from Monday to Friday, eight to five. However, it's still closed on the weekends. So there's a special interest growing here in Lewisville to develop a Lewisville Senior Advisory Board, sort of to take to the place of the advisory board that will be disbanded, we were told, soon, and to work on special projects with the city and all of their networks and at large in special projects. We will have more information on that as time goes on. We again want to thank you very much for listening to us, and it's a pleasure to meet you again.
Thank you for being here, Nancy. Garvin "Olivia" Gamble-Swan? And my apologies if I messed up any of those. And if you wouldn't mind, please stating your name and address for the record? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Gilmore, and the City Council. My name is Joe Fields, and I'm the senior pastor of the New Beginnings Church in Lewisville, Texas. Our address is 1569 West Main Street. I'm here on behalf of the Lewisville Senior Living Challenge Organization. Our church, New Beginnings Church, is focused on contributing to the spiritual needs of our community and being a community asset. Our mission includes improving the local predicament of our citizens through collective partnerships. Last Saturday at our church, we fed 468 of your citizens in Lewisville. And NBC feeds on a monthly average of about 1,200 families per month. We partner with other organizations like Heart of the City and Love Thy Neighbor. The Love Thy Neighbor organizations assist us with clothing a lot of your citizens. We clothe close to 120 families per month. Our clothing operation is open on the first and third Saturday of each month, but our food operation is open Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from one to three on Wednesdays, from three to five, one to three on Mondays, three to five on Wednesdays, and from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. every Saturday. It's not something we do just once a week or once a month. We do it three times-- We do it three times a week. As you know, 8.3% of Lewisville residents, as it relates to our senior citizens, one of the things that I personally, as a pastor, has led our church to do is we want to see what our local predicament is in our community. We've identified one of the local predicaments in our community is senior citizens. And them having the accessibility, them having the resources that they need to continue to live a productive life. Some of these lovely people have worked all their lives, and due to certain situations, they're in a predicament. So our church has taken that on as one of our predicaments. Also, what we're doing, since we've identified this local predicament, we're now looking within our own congregation to see what resources that we have that we can bring to bear against their predicament. Not only are we looking on the inside, we're also looking to partner with other organizations. So as you know, 8.3% of Lewisville residents are 65 and over, and the group is growing. Unfortunately, many are moving into a life of poverty, with 9.7% of them already living below the poverty line, according to the reports. My compliments to Councilwoman Ronnie Cade and her efforts to help in the projects to support this senior housing crisis. Thank you, Councilwoman Cade, for your leadership in this. And I pray that it becomes contagious to all of you, which I'm sure it will. I'm here to advocate as well for fair, low, and fixed income rent and resources. It's a shame that in 2023, we have to advocate for our seniors just to keep a roof over their heads and to keep them from having to make desperate decisions over what to pay each month. This evening, I'm here to offer our NBC ministry support and our campus in hopes that we can develop another partnership to assist our seniors, but we cannot do it alone. We need to help, we need help with funding for classrooms, computers, for our seniors and citizens, our seniors and children, financial support for class supplies, et cetera. Many seniors have limited transportation to go to senior centers. But NBC, our church, is located in the heart of Lewisville. I was told that if you were to get into a helicopter and drop a balloon to the middle of Lewisville, you would hit our campus. That's how we are operating. Many seniors have limited transportation to go to the senior centers, but NBC is located in the heart of Lewisville with plenty of parking and classrooms for training during the week. Our church would like to partner with the city council in any way that you all see is legal, that you all see in a way that's ethical, that you all see in a way that's logical, so that we can try and serve all of our seniors together. We have committed to a small committee of concerned senior citizens to find a way to help them. And we please help them to find, we please ask you to help do the same. I'd like to close by recognizing the Lewisville Senior Living Challenge Committee, Dr. Nancy Sansom, who spoke just a minute ago, Dr. Willie Peterson, would you please wave your hand? Sister Julie Hammer, she's their financial advisor, and Judy Paulus, who's their outreach resource. Hopefully, you can make sense of what I've just tried to say, and I pray that we can partner some way to make this community better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Pastor, somebody from staff will be reaching out to you just about opportunities, I'm sure. What I would like to say is, I think, and I can speak for the council up here, nobody up at this dais believes that this municipality works without these five things. And those are our schools, our nonprofits, our businesses, government, and our faith communities. So when those five things are working together, we have an amazing community. So I appreciate you taking the time to step forward and let people know what resources you have available. We'll see how we can put them to work. I have Mr. Jeff Fisher. Mr. Fisher, if you could state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Jeff Fisher. I am a resident of Flower Mound. I live at 4700 Seafarer Court. Hopefully, that's not going to get any tomatoes tossed at me. I am the executive director of Miracle League North Texas. And whereas we have advocated this evening for seniors, I am here to advocate for our friends with special needs. Miracle League North Texas is a baseball league for anybody with special needs. Right now, we run the gamut of age from three years old up to 51. We've got needs including Down Syndrome, autism, mobility challenges, kids in wheelchairs, kids in walkers, where, any people who have not been invited or have been removed from regular baseball leagues, they are now able to play baseball at Bakersfield Park in Flower Mound. We started two years ago with 46 kids. We started this season with 135, which I think tells you the need that is out there. Word of our fund is still growing, or still spreading, and I'm hoping that's what you'll help me do tonight, is spread the word to the citizens of Lewisville. Obviously, the majority of our kids and athletes are from Flower Mound. There's six kids from Lewisville right now. And I know there's a lot more to support. There's a lot more to support out there. We've actually got one kid from Gainesville, which tells you that they're driving an hour to come play baseball with us. We do play games at Bakersfield Park in Flower Mound. Our field was turfed last summer because the kids in wheelchairs, kids in walkers, benefit from that greatly. We were playing on a dirt softball field prior. The parents would have to clean those devices for hours after these games, but the parents would tell me, "We do that because these kids love to be on a baseball field." Councilwoman Cade understands that love for being on a baseball field. She actually threw out our first pitch this spring. We were happy to have her do that. Councilwoman Cade is close to this because she actually started this effort back in the late 90s and early 2000s with her Challenger League here in Lewisville. So we're proud to take her vision and continue it in this area. What I usually tell people is there's three benefits of our program. The athletes benefit because they're out on a field. They're getting physical activity. They're meeting new friends. The parents benefit because they're now removed from their kids for a period of one hour, possibly an hour and 15 minutes. But they take that time to be behind the fence and just sit there and cheer their kids on. Some of these kids are tied to their parents 24 hours a day, seven days a week. To have that one hour a week is truly beneficial to everybody. We also have a buddy program, so this is our third benefit. We've got members of the community, could be a baseball team, could be NCL volunteer leagues, that come out and help our athletes. Some of our athletes, they'll hit a ball off a tee. They'll run after the ball. In our world, that's fine. We'd like them to eventually get to first base. That's where our buddies come into play. So these buddies may not have been exposed to our friends with special needs before. They're now joining things like Circle of Friends at their schools. They're now sitting with these kids at lunchtime. And I think it's a special program. I did have pictures, I did have a presentation. To see this is to love it. I invite all of you to Bakersfield Park. We start at 9:00 on Saturday mornings. We run through May 6th. I would love to have you out. If you've got any questions, miracleleaguentx.com. Our registration never closes, so we're always accepting new athletes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
I want to personally thank you for what you've done. And to get 135 participants is huge. It's absolutely huge. I would love to see more information go out to Lewisville, to Lewisville kids. We'll work on that.
And I know my time's up, but I would love to partner with Lewisville Parks and Rec. I talked to one of the security officers or the police officers in the back here. He was interested in learning more, so I think the more we spread the word of what we're doing.
We'll have somebody from the Parks Department reach out to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Oh, y'all, the fun part's just getting started.
Yeah, y'all need to stay.
Have a good night. Item F, Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card, or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, do we have any requests? Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, the second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, Consideration of An Appointment to the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition, DRMC. The city holds a seat on the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition. The coalition consists of a group of DFW area municipal, county, and transit authorities that address transportation issues across the region. They meet once a month in their Plano office for approximately one to two hours. Councilmember Green was appointed by the city council as the city's current representative to the DRMC on May 17, 2021. Councilmember Green has advised she needs to step down from the coalition. It is recommended that the council appoint an elected official to the seat. And myself, Mayor TJ Gilmore, has requested that by counsel. If that's okay, as there are some conversations about regional funding, and since I serve on DCTA, that may come into play. So, Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint Mayor TJ Gilmore to Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion, the second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item nine, Consideration of the Proposed Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget Calendar. City staff has provided a calendar showing the important upcoming dates for the council meetings regarding the city's budget process. The budget workshop is currently scheduled for August 12, 2023, and is recommended that the city council review the proposed calendar, direct city staff regarding any necessary changes, and adopt the calendar. If there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the budget calendar as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, the second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 10, Consideration of a Variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 2-201, Regarding Waiving a Portion of the Fees Associated with Keep Calm and Baseball On as Requested by Tracy Black, General Manager, Flower Mound Youth Sports Association. The Flower Mound Youth Sports Association is hosting the Keep Calm and Baseball On Tournament on June 11 through June 22, 2023. Over 3,600 youth participants will participate in the tournament. A sizable portion of the event will take place at Railroad Park and Lewisville Lake Park baseball complexes. A portion of the KCBO tournament has been held in Lewisville for the past 16 years, except for 2020 from the impacts of COVID-19. The proposed waiver of $7,030 is based on procedures established to meet the Financial Support and Sustainability Strategy for Cost Recovery and includes a waiver of 25% of estimated fees for the tournament. Approved waivers were 75% of fees for 2019 and 2021, and 50% of fees for the 2022 tournament. Prior to 2019, waivers were 100% of estimated fees for the tournament. It's recommended that the city council approve the request for waiver of fees as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the request for the waiver of fees as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion, the second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11, Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 15, Article 2, Section 15-36, By Expanding the School Zone on Farm-to-Market Road 544 Near Windhaven Parkway, Providing for a Repealer, Severability, a Penalty, and an Effective Date, and Declaring an Emergency. City staff is recommending extending the FM 544 school zone. Per the proposed ordinance, the western border of the school zone will be moved from 400 feet east of the Windhaven intersection to 500 feet west to include the Windhaven intersection in the school zone. The change will improve the safety of students walking to and from the residential neighborhoods south of FM 544 to the schools north of FM 544. FM 544 is a hilly road with limited sight distance, is 110 feet wide, has a high traffic volume, and a 50 mile per hour speed limit, thus making the crosswalk unsafe for students. City of Lewisville Transportation Board recommended approval of the change at their March 2, 2021, meeting with a vote of 7 to nothing. And it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Sherwan Shui, our city traffic engineer, available for questions. If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion, the second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 15, Article 2, Section 15-36, By Expanding the School Zone on Farm-to-Market Road 544, FM 544, Near Windhaven Parkway, Providing for Repealer, Severability, a Penalty, and an Effective Date, and Declaring an Emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Reports. Councilmember Green, would you mind?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Sure. Just got back from Washington, DC, at the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference. And this will be of some interest to our seniors. I got a chance to speak with Senator Cornyn, and I addressed one of the main issues that they have with the AMI chart that they had. So Senator Cornyn said he would look into it. We'll see about that. So I would tell Nancy and the seniors to make sure that you stay on his office. I told him who you guys were, to make sure they work that, try to work that out either through HUD or through some action with the federal government. That is all I have. Yep, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Cade?
No reports right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray?
Yes, Mayor, some library activities for the week. DIY Spring Decor for adults 18-plus. Tuesday, April 4, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. Mini comics and signs for tweens, for tweens aged 9 to 12. Friday, April 7, 2:30 p.m. Ticket is required at the Bennett Program Room. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, sir. I have a number of items for the Lewisville Grand Theater coming up in the next couple of weeks. First of all, The Adventures of Tom Sawyer, Presented in Russian by the Houston Russian Theater. That will be April 7. You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, Presented by Our Productions Theater Company, April 7 and 8, three performances. Brown Symphony Number 3 and Tchaikovsky Violin Concerto, Presented by Lewisville Lake Symphony, April 14. Texas Tunes, Ruthie Foster, Presented by the City of Lewisville on April 15. And as always, Friday nights, 6 to 9, acoustic jam sessions presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. Several activities going on. Garden Secrets Class, Natives in the Suburbs, Presented by Keep Lewisville Beautiful on April 6. Val Art Talk. Oh my. Who met Thurman, Mr. Thurman or Ms. Thurman, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, April 11th. I apologize for that. And then an exhibition, Lewisville ISD Middle School Art Show, presented by Lewisville Independent School District, March 24th through April 8th. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary?
No report, Mayor.
No great ED, anything?
Well, I did have a, I did have, do a interview with Terry Sullivan recently, talking about economic development in the city of Lewisville, so that came out last week. So if you haven't heard it, please listen.
Saw your post for all the new social media outlets as well, so really appreciate you guys stepping up on that.
No report.
No report.
Mayor, city council, park fans, just two announcements. A reminder that with Easter weekend, the parks will be pretty busy, and that at Lake Park, we'll be implementing our holiday slash event traffic flow through the park. So be aware that as you go visit the park, it might take you a little bit longer to get in, just because we're handling a big volume of people that day. And then the other thing is to remind everybody that the Friends of Lila are hosting their Run Lila event, not this weekend, but the following weekend, and you can register for that event at lela.org.
Mayor, and Mindy, if she's still listening, the lake level's 522.28, which is a quarter of a foot higher than two weeks ago, so I'm speculating that's due to water conservation months. Thank you for your...[1561.08][1561.08](Laughter).
Hard to top that one, I'm sure. Chief? Councilmember Kelly?
So a few things here. So first off, as it relates to 544, I do want to thank police staff for their enforcement out there over the past month or so. It's made a big difference. That is a sore point, especially for the folks in Castle Hills. It's the Wild West out there, just people speed through there all the time, so thank you for your focus on that area recently. And I'm a park fan, so I've got some park things I don't want to talk about real quick. So we have Walk and Talk in Central Park tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. We have two story strolls coming up. We have East Hill Park Story Stroll, which is where the Dragon Park Story Stroll wound up going after it was taken out of there. So it's a great, great event out there. Go out there and check that out. And we have Central Park, 9:00 a.m. on April 7th. And if I didn't say, the East Hill one is 4:00 p.m. on April 12th. And then, this is always exciting, if you haven't been to the cabin at Lila, that's a great place to go check it out. We have Saturday at the Cabin at Lila, April 15th from noon to 3:00, Learn About Life in Denton County in the 1870s. It's been completely refurbished, remodeled. Back to match 1870, of course.
Well, I wouldn't call it remodeled. It was the back together.
They painted all the brick white.
They took the shag carpet out.
I tried. All right, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Manager?
I just wanted to thank Parks staff. It was a really great week and weekend with our Parks Department, one, the opening of Herring, but also got to go out this weekend and build a park with them, a pocket park, which is super cool. And what's even more cool is to hear our frontline staff teach everyone, like teach the kids how to plant trees the proper way. I learned things, they learned things. It was really exciting, so, good job, Parks.
Awesome, awesome. So I wanted to give people a quick update. Under our legislative agenda this year, city council has, one of our items is to support legislation that enhances access to public education. There is a bill that has been filed by Senator Drew Springer and Representative Stuckey to add the Texas State Technical College to Denton County. So I had the opportunity to go down and advocate for this. It is a technical school only, all it does is certifications, but it is funded by the state. They have to have their charter added to a county, and their funding is outcomes-based. So you get a certificate, and you get job placement, and they get funded off of a formula based on something more than just a livable wage. So they're looking for high-demand, highly technical types of roles. What interests us, I think, here in Lewisville is the opportunity to upskill. There is only so much we can do in the realm of housing opportunities and rent and those various tools out there, but one tool that we can absolutely encourage is the upskilling and being able to give people access to education so that they can have a better job, so that they can build a better life. So I was very excited to advocate for Denton County and specifically for the city of Lewisville, and I thank council for the opportunity to advocate on that with our legislative agenda. Sometimes I know we look at those things and go, oh, that's a bunch of gobbledygook, and it doesn't have any impact. It gives us the opportunity to go down there and look for these options that can help our residents. So I was excited to have that, and I think it was a very positive outcome today. So we'll know as the legislative sausage mill continues. Other than that, should be a quiet week, I hope, knock on wood. I want to thank everybody for their time and attention. We do not have any closed session tonight, and as there is no further action to be taken, tonight's meeting is adjourned.